All right, we'll call our meeting back to order. We believe our technical difficulties have been resolved. So we will continue on with our agenda, and we do have a number of public hearings on the agenda this evening. Our screens are not on, folks. I have a script, so we'll start while staff continue to troubleshoot the system. So councillors, this evening we have five items on the public hearing agenda. The purpose of this hearing is for council to hear input from the public prior to making a decision on the proposals. To the members of the public who have chosen to participate this evening, welcome. Please note that council's procedural policy requires that you not cheer, boo, clap, or otherwise disrupt this hearing. Everyone that wishes will have an opportunity to be heard. Tonight, council may approve, reject, or defer its decision to a later date. Council approval is required for the proposals to proceed. I will now ask the municipal clerk to outline when the public hearing advertisements were published.
Madam Warden, a public hearing notice appeared in the May 7th, 2025, and May 14th, 2025 additions of the Chronicle Herald. The notices described the proposals, gave the date and time of the public hearing this evening, and indicated that staff reports were available to the public.
Thank you. Councillors, the first public hearing item this evening is for a proposal to enter into a development agreement to permit a transportation and warehousing use at a property located at 5209 Highway 215 in East Knoll. I would now ask the Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his report. Councillor Mitchell.
Planning Advisory Committee has considered the proposal on behalf of municipal council. The committee has reviewed staff reports, completed their evaluation, and will make a recommendation to council during this hearing. Madam Warden, through you, I would now ask staff to present their final report on the proposal.
So the applicant for this application is Philip Higgs on behalf of Dennis Penner and Clinton Penner of Central Tire Service Limited. The property is located at 5209 Highway 215 in East Knoll, and it's zoned the rural use north, RU2 zone, and the property is 2.6 hectares in size, and it is not located within a growth management or growth reserve area. So the applicant is requested to enter into a development agreement with the municipality to allow for a 20,000 square foot warehouse building on their property in East Knoll, and the transportation and warehousing use is permitted as a right in the highway commercial zone, and the RU2 zone permits highway commercial zone uses by development agreement. And the building is intended to be used for the warehousing of materials associated with the existing business on the property. So this was a site plan provided by the applicant, so the building is located at the rear of the property, highlighted here, and then Highway 215 is down at the bottom. So the planning and development department have reviewed the proposed application based on the applicable policies within the municipal planning strategy, and Policy AR39A of the municipal planning strategy enables highway commercial zone uses in the rural use north zone by entering into a development agreement. And council shall also consider Policies IM27, 28, and 29 when considering the development agreement, and a table of evaluative criteria and the enabling policies was provided in the staff report. Nova Scotia Public Works, they did comment on the application and indicated that the existing commercial driveway is acceptable for the new building, and their response indicated a negative impact to the provincial road network is not anticipated, and overall a negative impact to the surrounding properties is not anticipated with this application, and it enables an existing local business to expand with limiting impact on the surrounding So for citizen engagement, so there was an advertisement outlining the proposal, and that was under review in March 2025 in the Chronicle Herald, and a letter and questionnaire were mailed to all property owners within 300 meters of the subject property asking for comments, so there were 26 letters that were mailed out, and 17 responses were received. Majority of the responses indicated they didn't have a concern with the application and were happy to see development happening within the community, and there was one response that expressed a disagreement with the application and indicated the proposed location of the building was on a wetland and that the building would be better situated in a different location. And after review of our mapping and our wetland mapping, it doesn't indicate that there is a wetland on this property. And there was another letter indicating the date, time, and location of tonight's hearing, mailed to all property owners again within 300 meters, and the notice of the hearing was placed in the Chronicle Herald, municipal website, and social media, and the application is appealable to the Nova Scotia Regulatory and Appeals Board. And in terms of our timelines, we are at the public hearing this evening, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions for staff? Seeing none. I would now ask if the applicant has any comments or would like to make a presentation.
We won't maybe make any presentation, but we're glad to answer any questions. I'm Philip Higgs, acting on behalf of the Central Tire.
Does any member of council have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you. I will now open the floor for comments and questions. If you are viewing the YouTube livestream, you may use the YouTube chat feature which is being monitored. First, does anyone attending in person have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Does any member of the public have any questions or comments through the live chat on YouTube? No, thank you. Does any member of staff have any final comments? I would now ask the Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his committee's recommendation.
Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council give final consideration and approve entering into development agreement for a transportation and warehousing building located on property identified as PID 451-48996, Highway 215, East Knoll. As Chair PAC, I shall move.
Seconded by Councillor Rhino. Are there any final questions or comments from municipal councillors? Seeing none. Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Through you two staff, just of inquiry, can you refresh me, Director, is this the first really zone change that has been required since zoning came into affecting the rural use? I don't remember if there was, it must be awful close to being the first or the second or third anyway.
To you, Madam Warden, I believe it is, it's not a zone change, but I think it is the first planning application in the RU2 area.
On the RU2 area, yeah, and like I said, this is new, it's not like come get your permit and here we go, there's a process to it now, and I think as more people start to build and things have to change and things are required, that more people will become aware and become educated. Thank you.
Counselor Mitchell.
Madam Warden, just a question through the staff. It says that their wetland mapping didn't indicate any wetlands, did anybody actually walk the property? This is my question.
Through you, Madam Warden, the property was not walked, but we have wetland and water course mapping, and there is water courses, but there is no indication of wetland on the property.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions from councillors? Seeing none, we will go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously. Thank you, thank you. Okay, councillors, the second public hearing item this evening is a proposal to redesignate and rezone lands to enable the construction of approximately eight stacked townhouse buildings in Lance. I would now ask the Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his report. Through you, Councillor Mitchell.
Planning Advisory Committee has considered the proposal on behalf of municipal council. The committee has reviewed staff reports, completed their evaluation, and will make a recommendation to council during this hearing. Madam Warden, through you, I would now ask staff to present their final report on the proposal.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So the applicant's the Shaw Group Limited, and the location is a portion of the brickyard here, it's the Shaw Brick Plant, and it's a portion of the property is outlined in red. So the total size of the entire property is 44.1 hectares, but the area of land that's under consideration is approximately one hectare in size. The current zoning of the property is industrial-commercial IC zone, and adjacent properties zones include the village core that has some residential along Highway 2 and a commercial business, and then the Lance pool is on the subject site, the church, and then there's the post office, the fire department, and then a new restaurant has just been built here on the corner with Highway 2. And the proposals to amend the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw by changing the generalized future land use designation from industrial-commercial IC to medium-density residential neighborhood MR, and to rezone the same from industrial-commercial IC to townhouse R2T zone. This is just a satellite image showing the subject property again, it's the area outlined here in red, and here you see the brick plant, the Clay Brick Way, homes along Highway 2, and this area here has been redeveloped and it is now a restaurant slash retail space, the Lance outdoor pool, church, and as I mentioned, the post office and fire department are down here. This is subject photo properties and subject property photos, and this is just looking up towards Highway 2. This is the new building that was constructed, Lance Pool in the distance, and again looking down towards the church. The purpose of the application was to amend the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to allow for the development of four eight-unit stacked townhouse buildings. In addition to the mapping amendments, land use bylaw text amendments are required in order to allow stacked townhouses to be used in a cluster townhouse format. The aim of the application is to accommodate affordable housing intended for workers of the Shaw Brick Plant. The driveway for the proposed development is proposed to be located off of Church Street, which is owned by the province. The subject site also has 40 meters of frontage on Clay Brick Way. Parking for the townhouse units is proposed to be located in a common parking area in the center of the development, and the proposed location of the development is currently treated. So this is just a proposed concept plan, and if the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw mapping amendment application is approved, the applicant does not have to develop the site as shown on the concept plan. However, the applicant would be restricted by the size and frontage of the land and by the requirements of land use bylaw. So again, we have Church Street with the driveway supposed to go off Church Street currently, the parking's located in the middle, and then we have four buildings with eight units in it each. The applicant could also extend the driveway and go out Clay Brick Way as an option as And also just to note, they are required to have a buffer between existing residential uses and the proposed development, and that buffer can be a variety of different items. It could be a tree buffer, a vegetative buffer, it could be a fence, it could be a berm, it could be a combination of all three. And this is the proposed zoning map, again just showing you the subject site. These are some concept drawings of what the proposed buildings could look like, and this came from the Shaw Group Limited. There's also proposed land use bylaw amendments, and in order to allow stacked townhouse dwellings to be permitted in a cluster townhouse format, the definition just has to be amended, and the other thing is to allow the stacked townhouses, again to be allowed in a cluster townhouse format, we want to ensure that they meet the minimum requirement of an 18 meters of Policy analysis, the staff have received comments from internal departments and external agencies. Policy IM11 of the municipal planning strategy is the policy that permits council to consider the proposed mapping amendments. East Hans Council has to determine if the proposed application is in the best interest of the municipality. Staff believe the application is in the best interest of the municipality because it supports a local business by providing an opportunity for the applicant to construct affordable housing that supports their employees. The location of the site will allow employees to walk to work, and it allows the future residents of the development to walk to local amenities such as the outdoor pool, restaurant, and a local store. The applicant submitted a traffic impact statement prepared by WSP for the proposed development. The statement concludes that site-generated trips are not expected to have any significant impact to levels of performance on adjacent streets and intersections or to the regional street system. Nova Scotia Public Works commented that they have no concerns and additional information will be required at the site plan approval stage. Parking will comply with the land use bylaw requirements of 1.5 parking stalls per dwelling unit and an additional visitor parking stall for every seven dwelling units. Infrastructure operations have commented that the capacity will be determined at time of site plan approval, and as part of the site plan approval, the applicant will have to submit a detailed stormwater management plan. The Regional Centre for Education did respond to our request for comments, and they used their school planning software, and the above number of students are projected, so total student yield, 28 to 48 new students, and that is within their capacity. The Regional Centre for Education indicated that according to the bus policy, students from the proposed development attending Maple Ridge Elementary would not qualify for a bus to the elementary school because they are closer than 1.6 kilometers from the school. The applicant has noted that the dwelling units are proposed to be a mixture of one and two-bedroom dwelling units. The Lance volunteer fire department has not commented on the application. A fiscal impact analysis has been completed for the application by our municipal finance staff, and the results of the analysis indicate that there would be an approximate annual fiscal benefit to the municipality of $27,187, and the fire rate coming from the development would be approximately $7,048 annually going to the Lance volunteer fire department. Citizen engagements, so an advertisement outlining the application and indicating that had been received and was under review by staff was placed in the Chronicle Herald in December of 2024. A public information meeting was held on February 4th at the Lloyd D Matheson Centre. Comments from the public information meeting included concerns about parking on Church Street adjacent to the Lance outdoor pool. Concerns were also expressed from residents living on Highway 2 that back on to the proposed development. A questionnaire for the application was mailed to residents within 300 meters of the application site. There were 363 questionnaires mailed and 22 responses received. The results of the questionnaire have been provided for council members for their consideration. So in general, we have some notes here just from the questionnaires. So there was concerns about the impact of traffic congestion on Church Street and Highway 2, the impact of this development and surrounding developments in Lance, including but not limited to condition of the roads from construction, waste and construction debris, impact on sewer and water systems, construction equipment on sidewalks, loss of privacy for residents living along Highway 2, there are existing sewer problems in the area and they have been sewer backflow issues, lack of crosswalks to get across Highway 2, concerns with parking on Church Street, Lance is losing its rural appeal, there's a lack of parks and trails in the area, would like to have a vegetative buffer maintained between the homes along Highway 2 and the proposed development, and some residents felt that East Hans was being greedy for allowing for more development. Affordability of the units are a concern, and impacts of the increased population on soft services such as doctors and shopping. Some respondents are in favor of the application, and one resident indicated that the Shaw Group created Lance for their employees and it's just history repeating itself. Some residents also indicated that the development should not be stopped. Public hearing notice was placed in the paper and on the municipal website and on social media, and the public hearing notification letter was mailed to property owners as well. So planning staff believe that the application complies with Policy IM11 of the municipal planning strategy and that the proposed application is in the best interest of the municipality. The application supports a local business by providing an opportunity for the applicant to construct affordable housing that supports their future employees, and this is just our flow chart, and we're here at the public hearing tonight. And MPS amendments are not appealable to the, it's not the UARB anymore, to the, yeah, provincial government. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Does any member of council have questions for staff? Counselor Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Warden, just a couple of quick questions. The buffer distance, what's the distance from the edge to the fence or the, what have they put in?
So through you, Madam Warden, the fence can go right along the property line, there's no distance from the setback of the property to the fence, it's there's a setback from the buildings to the property line, off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I will check, and it depends.
It just surprised me.
I think between five and six meters, but I can check here. So from the street, it's six meters, and from the rear real property line, it would be six meters, and three meters from the side property line.
So that'd be roughly 20 feet. Has the developer given any indication what type of buffer he plans on using, or?
Right now, they were considering the option three, which is the vegetative buffer, but it also depends on what happens when they start developing the site. If, for example, they remove all the vegetation, there's nothing left, then they'll have to do another option.
Okay, the last thing I have, if you don't mind, the fire department was asked and did not respond, I'm assuming that's correct?
That's correct.
And what about the distance for waste removal vehicles in there, is that a concern?
Through you, Madam Warden, they'll have to have a turning T here at the end for the waste management vehicles to be able to turn around.
No, I'm happy, thank you.
Counselor Musa.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to John. John, correct me if I'm wrong, a few years back, the Shaw Group came for an amendment to the municipal bylaw to allow an extra building there because they were over their capacity, or I'm wrong?
I can answer that. Through you, Madam Warden, and there's two development agreements on the site for the brick plant, and the initial development agreement was to allow an expansion in 2002, and then the second one was done in 2017, again to allow for an expansion of the brick plant. And the development agreement, if this is approved and the land is subdivided, will have to be discharged from this property, but the development agreement is also very particular in the fact it says that if the land isn't zoned industrial-commercial, then the development agreement doesn't apply, so it's kind of clear cut, saying that it only applies to the area that's zoned industrial-commercial, so if council chooses to rezone and redesignate the land, it's no longer industrial-commercial.
Okay, my only worry is if we approve that, we're not going against our bylaws. Thank you.
Anything else, councillor? Thank you. Counselor Mario.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and to Debbie. Debbie, I believe I read in the staff report that under the IC zoning, do I remember correctly that the owner, if they wish, that all of the trees could be removed under the current zoning?
Through Madam Warden, yes, that's correct. They could extend their brickyard right up to the edge, there would be setbacks if they put buildings in that location, but there's nothing to prevent from the lot being cleared.
Okay, so, thank you, and so it was really an observation that, you know, it would seem that with the buffer requirements under what's being proposed, it offers greater protection from that particular issue, so that's just an observation. Thank you.
Counselor Ed Cole.
Thank you, Madam Warden, just a couple of questions. I know I had some concerns about this coming out on that smaller street. So there's no crosswalk to access over to the sidewalk, is that correct? The Department of Highways didn't mention that, I don't suppose that they're that in tune with the, with CCRCE's rule of having students walking within 1.6 kilometers?
Through you, Madam Warden, there's no crosswalk there, but I do believe that the Regional Centre for Education has reached out to NSPW.
About it?
About the crosswalk.
I see, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from councillors? Seeing none, I would now ask if the applicant has any comments or would like to make a presentation.
Good evening, Madam Warden, members of council, thank you very much. My name is Kevin Neet, Vice President of Planning and Development for the Shaw Group Plan and Development Limited. I'd like to take a few moments of your time tonight, it's a hearing, to talk a bit about some rationale and some options and some response, answer some questions directly, both that were posed through PAC and in here tonight. Next slide, please. I believe we're all familiar with the subject site. Next slide, please. So rationale, again, I'm here on behalf of our manufacturing side of our business, our plant, and we did amend the development agreement in 2017 to look at an expansion. To be short or succinct is, we're having a real tough time attracting employees to the plant, to work at the plant. We're obviously a generational company that relied on the generations upon generations of living in the local community, working at the plant, so that's changed over time. And one of the barriers for folks coming to work at the plant is housing. And, you know, these are, some folks start at the plant at a reasonably young age, and they make a reasonable, you know, living wage, but, you know, to afford a home or a place to live in the community is tough, so we've recognized that issue, and so as a company, we've said, okay, well, let's put our money where our mouth is, so to speak, and try and address that issue the best we can. And this is, this is the first opportunity that we've, in quite a number of years, that we've tried to address that. So it makes a lot of sense for us, give our employees, hopefully new employees into the community, somewhere to live. We see it as a bit of a stepping stone in terms of product, it's not their forever home or their forever unit, it's come here, get established, and perhaps move on to another unit in Lance, in the community, and then, you know, new employees come in through, and so on and so forth. So we see this as a real benefit to our business and to our employees. Proximity to employment, what's not shown on some of the sketches are trails to be able to get, walk to work, right? We believe we can offer the most affordable product possible. I can't give you numbers here today, we're still, we're still working this all with numbers to see what might make sense, and it's with our employees, so it's not designed to be a particular profit center, so to speak, it's, again, encouraging people to come work at Shaw. And it gives them, again, an opportunity to establish in the community. Next slide, please. This is an updated concept plan, I'm going to call it the preferred option, I'll talk a bit about that in a moment, you'll see some energy space on there, you'll see a turning T on the end, you'll see the buffer to answer, councillor's the question earlier on this, you know, six-meter buffer. We're going to look at what's retained at the end of the day, once you start cutting and filling and grading, it has to be, you know, a miserably mandated, obviously, a decent buffer, but it's got to serve the purpose. And so if it's not robust enough buffer, okay, let's get some supplemental planting in there. We've... To, we've, we've been a long time in this community and intend to make sure we do everything we can to, to keep, to keep the adjacent neighbors pleased with our operations behind them. So, long way of saying, if the buffer's not adequate, we'll supple, we'll make it up with supplemental planning. Next slide, please. PAC had a discussion about this, as you're all aware, and said, hey, can you come out on Clay Brickway? And this is, this is one of those that is representative of that option. We're having a real tough time making that work from a technical perspective. And that is that the sewer comes off of Church Street, and it's not a very deep sewer. So, we tend to somewhat run at a grade as we, as we keep moving, moving along to that building that's closer to Clay Brickway. The other option that's not shown here is we're trying to take that building that's closer to Clay Brickway and move it forward to Church Street to, to try and compact the site as much as we can. And obviously, it minimizes footprint, retains more trees, et cetera. So, we're having a tough time getting this to work from a technical perspective, but I didn't want to, I did want to demonstrate that, that we've, we've listened and we're, we're trying to sort it out from a, from a technical cost and sewer perspective. Next slide, please. So, this is the preferred option that we're, that we're working with. And as noted by staff, it's a, it's a rezoning, so it doesn't exactly tie us, but, you know, again, we've got a, a reputation with you folks that, that what we show is, is what we will, what we will deliver. So, we think this is a, is a reasonable site plan that, that meets intent. Next slide, please. These are somewhat difficult to see, but what I will say that this is not the final, again, not, not final, so preface that. But what we're looking at is, is, you know, 592, so we'll round it up to 600 square feet foot units. And they would be, they'd be the smaller, smaller two bedrooms. Next slide, please. There could be an option of a three-bedroom layout, which is 750-odd square feet. So, we're trying to find the right size. The one-bedroom is even smaller. You can see the three-bedroom on the bottom, and it leaves sort of a one-bedroom as well. And that's, that's about 450-odd square feet. So, trying different sizes, and really, it'll be probably, if all goes well from, from council, a bit of an iterative process with, with our, with our employees and HR to find out, try and find out the need and try and meet a product that, that matches need. So, I just wanted to show council the various plans that are going through our analysis and systems with HR. Next slide, please. Some further renderings and images of what these stacked units could, could look like. Next slide, please. They're, they're modest by, by design, but I think with some, some attention to detail and some attention to landscaping, they'll, they will, they will look good. Next slide, please. And final slide. Next slide. Might be one more. There you go. Thanks very much, Madam Warden, council. We're certainly here for any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. I do have. Normally, we would wait for counselors to ask questions later on, but I, since the applicant has made a, a presentation, I will allow a couple at this time. Deputy Warden McPhee.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to the applicant. My question was going to be about if you could access Clay Brickway. You did sort of address that, but I didn't really understand. You talked about the sewer line coming in from Church Street. I couldn't see how that would stop you from making a driveway out to Clay Brickway.
If you could pull up the... Thank you. So, what we're doing is shifting that, that building ever so slightly further on to the, to the left, to the west. And so, that sanitary, from what I understand, and not being an engineer, from what I understand, there's a manhole location that, that changes, and apparently, that's causing an issue.
So, hmm, that you couldn't, I'm just thinking because some of the concern, of course, has been the increased traffic on Church Street. It seemed to me, I thought maybe possibly the area there on Clay Brickway that looked like maybe a marshalling yard or something, would that be part of the problem?
Certainly, our transportation folks are having discussions with our manufacturing side that are dealing with the marshalling of the trucks coming in and out. So, that's a series of, a series of steps of analysis to understand the pros and cons. For some reason, I suppose, the sanitary seemed to be the bigger issue of the, our civil engineer in our office. And our manufacturing is still not sure how they're going to deal with the, their transportation coming in and out of there.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gordon Cole, your vote?
Yeah, I did, thank you. No, I just want to say that I appreciate the, the plan, talking about the exit out onto the, out onto the Rotary versus the Church Street one. Thank you.
Okay. I will now open the floor for comments and questions. If you're viewing the YouTube livestream, you may use the YouTube chat feature, which is being monitored. First, does anyone attending in person have any comments or questions? If you'd come to the mic.
I'm Earl Bachman. I live on Frenchie's Road, to start with, and the, just to answer the District Eight, sorry, District Six Warden's question, or, sorry, counselor's question with regards to buffers and everything. When Harmony Lane was put up, I don't think any consideration was, was in place for my property or anybody on Frenchie's Road. All we got was a plastic fence. So, I'm not sure if that comes into play here or not. Second of all, I think, I also am part of Lance Recreation, and we have no problems anymore with what's going on with transportation out there or the, sorry, I'm very nervous, with the people that would be coming and going out of there, other than the fact that I'm sure that they'll follow some sort of a speed limit, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else from the public have any comments or questions? I'm guessing not. Does any member of the public have any questions or comments through the live chat on YouTube? There are none. Does any member of staff have any final comments? None? I would now ask the Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his committee's recommendation. Counselor Mitchell.
Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council give second reading and approve an application from the Shaw Group Limited to amend the MPS and LUB by changing the land use designation of a portion of PID 45086980 to medium density residential neighborhood MR and rezoning the same portion of land to townhouse R2T zone. And give second reading and approve text amendments to the stacked townhouse definition and provisions in the land use bylaw. As Chair of PAC, I so move.
Seconded by Counselor Tingley. Any further discussion on the motion? Counselor Rhino.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just through you to staff. Looking at the proposal here, in that vegetated area between Clay Brickway and, I guess, what's going to be the turning area. If, if things were successful and more employees could be found, I mean, is there enough room there to put another building such as, as they're in the plans right now there?
Madam Warden, yes, they could put additional units there if they did stack townhouses. But it depends, again, on the number of parking stalls they'd be required to have, the amenity space and the, and the turning area, they'd have to have that. So, they may be able to fit another building, I'm not quite sure, but they might not be able to get a full eight, maybe they could get a four. I'm not quite sure, given all of that they have to fit in there.
So, there is a possibility?
Yeah.
To put more there if required? Well, I guess, for me, I don't know if, if the applicant is, is that's why they've more or less stayed with the Church Street one or what? But if they do, then they will, that will bring the elevation even higher for the sanitary source, so they would have to probably deal with it at that point. Is that correct?
Through Madam Warden, yes, they would have to meet all the technical requirements of being able to service the area as well. So, as we said, this is just a concept plan, it's not what they have to develop. If they need to, for technical reasons, move their building so that they're all closer to Church Street in order to, and then put the parking back here, they could do that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Tingley.
Yes, through the Chair. First, I just want to acknowledge the people that had concerns about this development. You know, rightfully so, people have concerns. And some of it is around infrastructure and that sort of thing. From what I understand, we are doing some sewer and water upgrades, and some of this, some of these concerns, I think, will be dealt with in the future, and hopefully, all of them. Mr. Bachman mentioned about a buffer, and I know the area he's talking about. I'm satisfied from listening to Shaw that they will leave a better buffer than, than Mr. Bachman had to deal with. This property is already zoned to develop for industrial commercial already, as of right, so that could go forward anyway. It seems to me that a residential development is more desirable for that area than a industrial development. And there's no question it's going to be developed in some form, just like most, most property in East Hanson at some point. Even though we'd like everything to stay the same, nothing does stay the same. Like, you look at any other area in the world, you go to, it, it changes. So, and the other thing I'm thinking about is, not just now, but 25 years from now, what are the people in this area going to want there as it's built out? Do they want an industrial development, or do they want a residential development? It's, it's not going to be left vacant, that's for sure. And the final thing I would say is, this property owner does have a, a good reputation in the area, in, in all of East Hanson, specifically in Lance. They've, they've done a lot of good work for, for many years since they've had the plant there. So, based on staff's report and the feedback I've heard from residents as well, has been mostly positive. That's why I'm supporting this development.
Anything further from counselors? Seeing nothing, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously. Thank you, folks. So, counselors, the third public hearing item this evening is a proposal to amend the land use bylaw to permit non-farm dwellings to be considered a lawfully existing use. I would now ask the Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his report. Counselor Mitchell.
Planning Advisory Committee has considered the proposal on behalf of municipal council. The committee has reviewed staff's reports, completed their evaluation, and will make a recommendation to council during this hearing. Madam Warden, through you, I would now ask staff to present their final report on the proposal.
Okay, John?
Soon as my presentation comes up here.
What impowers? Technical gremlins are avid tonight.
There we go. All right. So, at the regular meeting in February, council passed a motion directing staff to prepare text amendments to the land use bylaw that would treat existing non-farm dwellings within the agricultural reserve zone as lawfully existing uses to enable these homes to be expanded, moved, and add accessory dwelling units without the restrictions placed on them as a result of being in the AR zone. And the reason for that motion was resident expressing some frustration, having owned, found out that they own one of these non-farm dwellings in the AR zone. And staff are aware that there are other ones out there as well. Unfortunately, 25% in this case is the upper limit for expansion of a non, non-conforming structure. And as I say, over the past few years, there have been other cases similar to this. So, as a result of the direction, staff had prepared amendments to the land use bylaw. And the amendments are actually pretty straightforward. They simply list lawfully existing uses as conditional in the AR zone and then add a provision for non-farm dwellings to be considered. So, it's, it's, again, the amendments are very straightforward. And staff have reviewed the proposed amendments based on policies in the MPS. And in the staff report, we go through the various policies. And we have determined that the proposed amendments are consistent with the spirit and intent of the MPS associated with the agricultural reserve designation, as well as general policies related to amending land use bylaw. And the Agricultural Advisory Committee was also consulted, and under their terms, under their mandate, there, it's intended that that committee review land use matters and provide recommendations to PAC. The Ag Advisory Committee did meet on April 8th, and they did pass a motion in support of the changes, and the notes from that meeting were appended with the report. Because this isn't a site-specific amendment, there's no mailout to residents, and it's a LUB amendment, so there's no PIM as well. So, excuse me. So, we've concluded our review of the changes. The amendments have been evaluated using all applicable policies, and staff did recommend in favor of the changes. Council's decision on the application would be appealable to the Nova Scotia Regulatory and Appeals Board because it does not involve a corresponding amendment to the MPS. But that's the end of my presentation. As the slide indicates, we're at the public hearing, and that's it. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Does any member of council have questions for staff? Seeing none, I will now open the floor for comments and questions. If you're viewing the YouTube livestream, you may use the YouTube chat feature, which is being monitored. First, does anyone attending in person have any questions or comments? And seeing as we no longer have public in person, I will move on and see if any member of the public have any questions or comments through the live chat on the YouTube channel. No? Okay, does any member of staff have any final comments? I would now ask the Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his committee's recommendation.
Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council give second reading to amendments to the land use bylaw that make existing non-farm dwellings within the agricultural reserve AR zone lawfully existing uses. As Chair of PAC, I so move.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Haid. Does any, are there any final questions or comments from municipal counselors? from municipal counselors? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously. So, moving on, counselors, the fourth public hearing this evening is a proposal to amend the land use bylaw provisions related to special events. I would now ask the Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his report.
Planning Advisory Committee has considered the proposal on behalf of municipal council. The committee has reviewed staff reports, completed their evaluation, and will make a recommendation to council during this hearing. Madam Warden, through you, I would now ask staff to present their final report on the proposal.
Thank you, Madam Warden. In September of 2024, East Hans Municipal Council passed the following motion: Move that staff conduct a review of the outdoor event regulations around hours of operation, noise, and facilities, and that this review included jurisdictional scan of regulations in the, in other areas. Uh, so currently, we have two definitions for special events, a large-scale special event and a small-scale special event. Uh, the def- the difference in definitions is, uh, the thousand persons or more at any given point during the event. Uh, so a small scale is anything less than a thousand persons, and a large scale currently is anything over, uh, a thousand persons. Also, section 3.34 of the land use bylaw details the requirements for large-scale special events. So this section outlines the required documents, uh, and permits required for a special event. So these include the requirement to submit a security plan to both the municipality and the RCMP, providing the hours of operation for the event, a site plan that indicates setbacks of any proposed tents or other temporary structures, the size of the subject property, location of parking, neighboring property uses, insurance coverage, and, uh, an inspection by the municipal fire inspector once the event is set up. And once all the documentation has been provided, a development permit is, would then be required to be issued by the development officer. So for the proposal, um, staff are recommending that the number of persons for a large-scale special event be reduced to 500 persons at any given time from the thousand, as well as, um, excluding a, a few, um, so excluding municipal provincial events, sports tournaments, remember and stay ceremonies, religious ceremonies, services, um, and parade and firework displays. And also adding that a large-scale special event also includes any event where there's an assembly of 200 persons or more at any given point in time during the event that is intended to be semi-private but is accessible to the general public via ticket admission fee or similar, where music, noise, or sound of any kind or source, including but not limited to amplified, recorded, or computer-generated music sounds, live music, sound or band music is performed or played. And then also amending our definition for small-scale events, um, also, um, changing that number to 500, and in excluding, um, municipal provincial events. There's also a proposal, uh, to remove the high-risk floodplain, uh, and add that no special, no, no large-scale special event shall operate between the hours of 12:00 AM and 7:00 AM. The East Hans Community Standards Bylaw, uh, does contain regulations on noise within the municipality. So the bylaw does state that no person shall cause or allow to be made any noise that unreasonably disturbs or tends to disturb the peace and tranquility of a neighborhood, including any shouting, movement, music, or activity. And no owner or occupier of a premise shall cause or to be made any noise which originates from the premises and unreasonably disturbs the peace and tranquility of a neighborhood, including shouting, movement, mu- music, or activity. Uh, however, with these regulations, residents are typically required to keep a log of noise to the, uh, uh, in their neighborhood, uh, and provide that to the municipality. And the RCMP may enforce this bylaw as well if needed. For the jurisdictional scans, we looked at three, three different municipalities. So in West Hans Regional Municipality, they, um, have a regulation for special events, which is any, um, event where a large number of people, 500 or more, are brought together. Um, and they have a list of, of, um, events that they regulate. The town of Turo, um, under their special events policy, uh, states a special event application is required when one or more of the following applies, and they have a regulation, uh, similar to what we're proposing, that any event intended to be semi-private but is accessible to the general public via ticket admission fee or similar. And then Halifax Regional Municipality requires approvals for events. Any event that occurs on municipal land, uh, where food and drinks are to be sold, if there's any municipal services required, such as police, road closures, security, infrastructure, um, events on private property are not required, um, would not require approval, but must respect and comply with their noise bylaw, and they do allow for exemptions to be applied for to their noise bylaw through the municipality. Uh, there was, uh, a public information meeting was not required, um, as there is not, no amendments proposed to the municipal planning strategy. Um, and tonight's hearing was advertised in the Chronicle Herald municipal website and social media, and s- staff were recommending approval of the amendments, and we are at the public hearing this evening. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Does any member of council have any questions for staff? Deputy Warden McPhee.
Uh, thank you, uh, Warden. Through you to staff. Um, I'd just like to first say, I, I understand the intent of this, uh, bylaw, and I, I will support this, uh, even though, as I've stated before, I believe there's a flaw in the, uh, definition of large and small scale. Um, my other question is, will this affect events such as heydays where we could have 500, 600 people at a given time? Will we have to get a permit, a different permit than what we've had before?
Uh, through you, Madam Warden, I, I don't believe we've ever issued a permit for heydays. Um, and one of the amendments was removing the high-risk floodplain, which is where that festival or that event takes place. Um, so if, if the event is intended to have or expected to have over 500 people, then a, a permit would be required under these new regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Rhino.
I guess, uh, through you, my question is similar to Counselor McPhee's, uh, uh, jumping out at me is Tide Fest. Would, would this have a definite, uh, um, cause for them to change any of their events up there? Uh, and I'm also wondering with regard, every once in a while, a certain area will have street dance, uh, and when they get all the, um, permissions and stuff, that will affect us to shutting it down at, at 12:00 AM or 12:00 midnight, or whatever, however you want to, uh, phrase that, but midnight, we'll say. So, um, can you answer those questions?
Uh, through you, Madam Warden. For, for Tide Fest, um, again, if, if they're expected to have over 500 people at the event at any given time, uh, then they would be required to, to have a permit under these new regulations.
Excuse me, but, no, they wouldn't because it's municipally-owned properties.
Oh.
And it's an enclosed permanent structure.
It's not indoors.
It's indoors.
Oh, I, sorry, I thought it was outside, but.
I didn't hear that, so.
Municipal property.
Pardon?
Municipal property.
Municipal, even though it's a, another group that is, that's, that it's holding
Uh, through you, Madam Warden, um, Tide Fest is held indoors in a permanent structure. So these, uh, these regulations would only apply where the large-scale event is, um, outside of an enclosed structure.
Outside.
Yeah, so it's intended for those sort of one-off, out in, you know, fields or, you know, places like that, that, um, don't have a permanent structure, a permanent place to hold events. So, um, that would be my interpret- Tide Fest is primarily held inside the sports flag.
Okay, so this, basically, this is just for outdoor events and not indoor events? Like, if somebody wanted to have 500, a thousand people in, in the arena in Lance, they do not have to have a special events permit, and they do not have a to- a curfew on the time.
Not under these regulations.
Pardon me?
Not under these regulations.
Not under these regulations. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Garden Cole.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So, just to reiterate, when we talked about this last week, um, we brought up the, having some kind of event, say, in the dome. And what were the, how did we see that going better than it may have gone in the past? If there's no restrictions.
I believe that was in the rental contract for the dome was going to specify, so.
Okay, because we would have more, we would have control that way. Okay, thank you.
Deputy Warden.
Uh, thank you, uh, Warden. I guess, uh, through you to staff, I just need a clarification then. So did I just hear that if it was on a municipal property, it doesn't have to be permitted?
It says municipal event.
Or if it's, only if it's a municipal event?
Could we go back? I thought it said on municipal property.
Municipal provincial events.
Okay.
Provincial events, okay. And also, um, during heydays, um, there's a group that puts on a car show, they could have less than 500, uh, but they might end up with over 500. So do they need to be permitted for either case?
Uh, through you, Madam Warden, I, I believe the intent is that if, if the event at any given time expects to have over 500 people.
So the 500 people would have to all be there at the same time.
At the same time.
See, there's, that's where the problem comes in. That's not what we have written there, so.
It says at any given point, 500 people at any given point.
And if there's less than 500 at any given point, you wouldn't need a permit. So I would say, you never need a permit, is how I read that. I, I'm thinking, I don't think I can support this now just by the way it's written. Uh, I can see this having, just causing this problem. I think we should go back to the drawing board and rethink this. That's my position, anyway. Thank you.
Any further questions from counselors for staff? I will now open the floor for comments and questions. If you are viewing the YouTube live stream, you may use the YouTube chat feature which is being monitored. And first, does anyone attending in person have any questions or comments? And seeing none, I would ask if any member of the public has any questions or comments through the live chat on YouTube.
No.
All right. Does any member of staff have any final comments? John?
Thank you, uh, Madam Warden. Yeah, the, um, the deputy warden does point out that there is an issue with the definition of small-scale events. We just intended to clean that up in our plan review. So, you know, w- we weren't dealing with that at this time. You pointed out there is a wording error there, but, you know, we can just clean that up later. It, it was too late at this point because you had already given first reading to the amendments before we found that out, so.
Okay. So does, uh, Counselor Rhino.
Well, through you to, to the director. You know, you plan to clean, with good intent, you plan to clean that up. Why wouldn't that be specified, you know, right now or going forward, or a motion of counsel that that would be, be cleaned up? I, I, it, it.
Counselor, the director has indicated that staff do intend to clean it up through the, uh, plan review following the public hearing. I, I don't believe we need a motion for that to be done because staff has indicated that they're doing it.
Hmm, I just, I just find it, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna, if this passes, it's with the intent of having this done. Well, I don't know. I, I'd, I'd rather feel safer if there was a motion to clean it up than, than it's on the books, right? It, it is no disrespect to staff, but it, it would be far, far cleaner.
You were certainly free to make a motion after the public hearings.
I'll leave it to see what others say.
Any final comments from counselors? I've lost my place. I would now ask the Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his committee's
Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council give second reading and approve amendments to the land use bylaw by bending the, by amending the definitions of small and large-scale special events and the regulations for large-scale special events to restrict the hours of operation. As Chair of P- PAC, I so move.
Moved and seconded. Are there any final questions or comments from municipal counselors? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed by a vote of nine to two, with, uh, Deputy Warden McPhee and Counselor Musa voting nay. Counselors, the fifth public hearing item on the agenda this evening is a proposal to amend the municipal planning strategy, strategy in relation to changes to the Municipal Government Act. I would now ask the Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his report.
Planning Advisory Committee has considered the proposal on behalf of municipal council. The committee has reviewed staff reports, completed their evaluation, and will make a recommendation to council follow, during this hearing. Madam Warden, through you, I would now ask staff to present their final report on the proposal.
Thank you, uh, Warden. Um, yeah, so there were some changes made to the Municipal Government Act, uh, just over a year ago, um, that could impact a number of things that the municipality does, a number of our processes relevant to planning applications, development agreement processing, and site plan approval. And staff are recommending some corresponding changes to municipal processes that we think will save applicants and the municipalities money and time. Um, the first one had to do with, uh, public consultation. So the MGA now authorizes, um, the municipality to not have to advertise in a newspaper. Uh, this was discussed at PAC and council earlier. And although council decided that there's still merit in, in advertising in the Herald, so that hasn't changed, um, it does, that the, uh, changes that staff, uh, brought forward would also, I guess, formalize the use of the municipal website, social media, and local circulated print media where it's available. So there is, uh, an amendment to policy CE18 that would achieve that. Um, the next change has to do with non-substantive amendments to development agreements. So the MGA allows non-substantive development agreement amendments to be approved by the development officer rather than council. Um, and the authority exists for council to define substantive and non-substantive amendments within a DA, and we've always done that. We've always listed what, uh, we consider non-substantive amendments. Uh, the only difference, up to this point, they've all had to come back to council. So staff are proposing that the DO be given authority to approve non-substantive amendments to a development agreement where they are defined in an existing and future development agreements. And so there would be a new policy added to the municipal planning strategy, IM36, um, which, I guess, puts some, uh, guidelines in place for the development officer before they, uh, approve a non-substantive amendment. So, uh, the proposed amendment would have to be listed as non-substantive in the existing DA. It would have to be in keeping with all other provisions of the DA, um, all other municipal bylaws, regulations and standards, as well as any other provincial or, or federal regulations. Uh, and the next change also deals with development agreements, in this case, a discharge. Um, the MGA now allows the chief administrative officer to discharge completed development agreements in part or in whole, rather than council. And that really is just an administrative step that, you know, um, doesn't really, I think, need to come to council for any particular reason. So staff have drafted a policy, IM37, that would, uh, achieve that. And in this case, the policy simply, uh, uh, requires the CAO to consult planning staff before they discharge, essentially to make sure that the D, the development agreement is no longer needed, that there's underlying zoning that will cover the land use, and so on. Um, there are several other changes as part of this package. Um, some of them we can't implement yet until, uh, regulations are approved by the province. So, for example, the first one would be nice, we, we're always sending certified copies of, um, uh, changes So, for example, the first one would be nice. We, we're always sending certified copies of, um, uh, changes that you approve to the province. Um, we will be able to do that electronically once they implement regulations. They don't exist yet. Um, also require that appeals to site plan approval state the grounds for appeal and limit appeals to substantive matters. So currently, anyone can appeal any site plan for any reason. There, it's not, uh, specified. Um, and clarifies council's ability to approve development agreements in principle with administrative contractual details to be dealt with by the CAO. And we're not proposing to, uh, use this tool. Um, essentially, that would allow you to approve, uh, very vague development agreement. You know, you approve a, say, 75 unit apartment building on this property and leave all the details up to the CAO. I don't think council would want that. I think you want to see the details. Um, so we're not proposing to make any changes there. Also enables the municipality to require financial contribution within a development agreement for off-site improvements. And I think that would be, um, quite a change from our current practice, so we propose simply to review that in the upcoming plan review. Um, also allows council to provisionally approve a development agreement or amendment to a, a DA, um, when you're also doing an amendment to the municipal planning strategy or land use bylaw. And we received some legal advice several years ago that we actually can do this now. So we've been actually doing this. This, I guess, will just formalize the fact that it's now in the MGA and, and, um, permitted. Um, and the final one, allow performance bonding for site plans. And again, that's one, um, I think needs a little more thought, so we're proposing that that, uh, be reviewed in our, in the plan review. Um, so as with the last two items, um, well, this is a change to the MPS, so you're not required to hold a public information meeting. If it's a housekeeping amendment, and staff feel that these are, uh, housekeeping amendments, so didn't hold a, or didn't recommend a pin. And, uh, the public hearing was authorized at April council advertising, keeping with our current policy and council's decision on this proposal is not appealable to the No Scotia Regulatory and Appeals Board because it is an MPS amendment, not an LUB amendment. So in conclusion, um, in keeping with recent changes to the MGA, draft amendments to the municipal planning strategy have been prepared that. Continue the use of the Chronicle Herald for planning applications and public hearings, but also enable the use of community print media where available, authorize the development officer to approve non-substantive amendments to development agreements, and authorize the CAO to discharge development agreements. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you, John. Does any member of council have questions for staff? Counselor? Who's first? Counselor Rhino.
I give it through you to staff. Did I hear that correctly? The, the, to, these non-substantive amendments will be listed in the development agreement? So we're aware of them when we approve it?
Through you, Madam Warden, yes. So if you look at any development agreement, there will be a section that lists what are considered non-substantive amendments, and they could be things like changes to the parking arrangement or signage, or, they, they tend to be minor things like that. Um, I was looking at one today where it said, um, you could increase the square footage of the building by 5% through an un-substantive amendment. So it tends to be those kinds of things. So typically, when you go from a concept drawing to a construction drawing, there are quite often some things that need to be tweaked a little bit, and that's really what the provision is for.
So then we could, we, at the time of the developer, approval of the development agreement, we could remove those as a non-substantive amendment. That could, that could go that way. So we could remove, remove, remove that. And then if they wanted to change that thing, then it would have to come back, correct?
Through you, Madam Warden, yes. If you ever see something in the list of non-substantive amendments you're uncomfortable with, absolutely, council has the right to have that removed from the draft development agreement. And then it would automatically be a substantive, um, amendment which would require coming to council.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Garden Cole.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And I got some clarity on the non-substantive amendments after last week, and I am satisfied with that now. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff from council? Seeing none, I will now open the floor for comments and questions. If you're viewing the YouTube livestream, you may use the YouTube chat feature which is being monitored. First, does anyone attending in person have any comments or questions? Seeing no one. Does any member of the public have any questions or comments through the live chat on YouTube? No, there are none. Does any member of staff have any final comments?
No, Madam Warden.
I would now ask the Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his committee's recommendation.
Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council give second reading to housekeeping amendments to the municipal planning strategy as outlined in the staff report, MGA changes dated May 6, 2025. That enable the use of the community print media for planning applications and public hearings, authorize the development officer to approve non-substantive amendments to development agreements, and authorize the CAO to dis, discharge development agreements. As Chair of PAC, I so move.
Seconded by Counselor Marion. Any further comments or questions from counselors? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously. That concludes tonight's public hearings, and I would thank everyone for attending. We will go back to our agenda, um, and to item number nine. Uh, before we do that, Counselor, there is not a break prescribed in the proceedings. It is 8:52. I just thought I'd ask if counsel, we've just done five public hearings. Does any member of council require, say, a five-minute break? I'm seeing a thumbs up. So is five minutes long enough, counselors? Okay, we'll be back at, well, I'll give you seven minutes. We'll be back at nine.
Welcome back, everyone. We'll call our meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is the Dr. J T. Snow Bursary and Leadership Awards for 2025 Appointment of Presenters. And so we move into this, I would just mention in conversation with the Uniact counselors, I've discovered that no one actually presents the award at Evan View's graduation. So I do have an invitation from Evan View to attend, and I would just say that with the agreement of the Uniact counselors, we'll get together offline and figure out who's going to attend that and let Evan View and staff know if that's okay with everyone. So we have left Hans East and Hans North. And I do believe it is Counselor Rhino's turn at Hans North this year. Counselor Rhino?
Yes, I'm glad you said that. You know, I rushed out and bought a new suit.
Do you want to be caught wearing the same?
Same suit, yeah. So my wife built on that as soon as volunteer rec night was over, so off we went to get a new suit. So anyway, I wanted to try it out, but it's also, you know, also when, seriously, my grandson is graduating at night, and it would be an honor for me to, my first grandchild was graduating, so it would be an honor for me to do the presentation at that award, so.
And that leaves us with Hans East. Now, I'm not sure how the counselors from the areas that feed into Hans East work it out. The Hans North area counselors have always done it on a rotational basis, and that's worked well for us. But I leave it up to the one, two, three, four, five counselors from Hans East area. And I know Counselor Miriam had indicated earlier that he was willing. Does anyone else? Oh, I missed one. There's another counselor from Hans East, yeah. So Counselor Musa.
I just want to mention that we leave Counselor Hap with no area.
No, his areas, they go to Hans East.
You didn't mention him, so.
I didn't mention anybody by name. Counselor Tingley.
Yeah, to the warden, if Counselor Miriam's already mentioned that he'd be interested, if the other counselors in the area in the corridor are fine with it, I'm fine with it. Maybe he can borrow Counselor Rhino's suit, where he's got a new suit.
Any further comments from anything? All right, so is it agreed that Counselor Rhino and Counselor Miriam will do the presentation? And I know at Hans North, Counselor Rhino already knows, when you're there, you're gonna make speech, too. I don't know if that's the same at Hans East or not. Anyway, okay, so do we need, I don't think we need a motion for that. I think just agreement, and Counselor Perry and Counselor Musa and I will figure out the Evan View thing within the next few days. All right. Okay, but there were also, before we do that, there were the leadership awards. We have the dates for the leadership awards. We don't have the dates for the leadership awards. They are usually through the day and in the morning. Until we have the dates, it's difficult. I know in the past, it's been hard for Counselor Rhino due to work commitments to do the leadership thing. Not knowing the date, I can't commit 100%, but if it is a day that I'm available, I would certainly do Hans North. I've done that in the past, and if no counselors, you know, were available, we could always have a staff member do that as well. And we don't have the date for Uniact District School or Riverside Educational Center. Does any counselor, okay, Counselor Perry?
In a quick sidebar here with Counselor Musa, when the date becomes available, I'll do the Uniact District School Leadership Award.
Okay, that's great. And Counselor Mitchell?
I'd be willing to Riverside Education Center if nobody else is free.
Is that agreed with everyone? Okay, so we have our folks. Okay, the C A O has asked us if we could circle back to the Schubinacade Canal issue, because we have learned, I'm gonna turn it over to her to explain what we have discovered.
Counselor, so through some research, since you spoke during Correspondence for Decision, and our senior leadership team has discovered a few things. I couldn't find in the archives the factors behind council pulling out from having a council member represented on the Canal Commission, but Adam has pointed out that there is actually some legislation that is an act that establishes Schubinacade Canal Commission. That legislation states that the commission shall have two persons who are resident in the municipality of the District of East Hans, one appointed by the governor and council for such a term, which would be the province, and one appointed by the council of the District of East Hans for such a term as the council may determine. And it also states that as soon as that person is no longer a resident of East Hans, they would cease to be a member of the committee, or of the commission. So it does appear that although you don't have to have a counselor on the committee, or the commission, sorry, you can go out to your public to request for representation on that commission that you would appoint to it. There is one member of the commission that is the provincial appointee for East Hans, and that's Mr. Brad Hodgson, it appears. So if you wanted to, we could reach out to the public through our social media and see if there's an interested party out there to be on the commission as your appointee.
Counselor Rhino?
Yeah, I don't remember a lot around, but I know, I remember we did have a counselor used to sit on that for, I don't remember why we pulled it off, but it must be obviously important that they would like representation from council on this. And I'm just wondering if there's any counselor that is, that is, would like to be involved in that committee on behalf of council before we'd ever turn it over. I still think it should be a council member. And then I guess at that point, it goes to the executive, or nominating committee, wouldn't it?
There's nothing to preclude it being a counselor, but the legislation doesn't say it's a counselor. It says someone who lives in East Hans, appointed by council, similar to what we used to do with the Housing Commissioner or whatever. We always had a public member appointed. Counselor Tingley?
Through the chair. I was gonna say, I see Counselor Miriam's put his light on, so maybe he wants to volunteer. But if nobody's gonna volunteer, I think we should just make a decision to go out to the public.
Counselor Maria?
Thank you, Counselor Tingley, and through Madam Warden, I would be prepared to make that motion, and I'll do that now. So I'd like to propose that we move to use our social media to reach out to residents, to inform them of the opportunity to serve in the Schubinacade Canal Commission and to, you know, seek their interests and give them instructions on how to proceed.
We have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Dixon. Counselor Mitchell?
Yeah, just a follow-up to Counselor Miriam, when you reach out to the residents, can you give them information on when they meet, how often, and so on? Because there's nothing there in what they're telling us, and maybe that's why counselors aren't jumping at the opportunity.
Any further questions or discussion on the motion? Deputy Warden?
Thank you, Warden. Yes, as Counselor Mitchell pointed out, even for counselors, I might be interested if I had an idea of what was expected of us, how often, what exactly the commission does. I think it's kind of hard for any counselor or any member of the public to make a decision on that without that sort of information.
So would it be agreeable for staff to bring that information, provide that information to council prior to advertising to the public? Counselor Rhino? I would suggest if we do that.
Through you, could we not table this motion with regard until we find out the parameters around it? And then the motion may be defeated anyway if we have, if it's favorable for a counselor to fit in the schedule.
Are you moving to table?
I move to table this motion until the information surrounding the number of meetings and the, how often they meet is established.
Seconded by Counselor Perry. Motion to table is not debatable. We'll go to vote. Motion is passed by a vote of ten to one, with Counselor Miriam voting nay. No, staff are going to bring back the information related to. Okay, so moving along, we will go to Committee Reports, item seventeen. We'll start with Corporate and Residential Services Committee Report, Counselor Garden Cole.
Okay. The committee held its regular meeting on May thirteenth, 2025, and the following motions are coming forward as a result of that meeting. First item, Presentation, Colchester East Hans Public Library. Jeff Mercer, Executive Director and Chief Librarian of Colchester East Hans Public Library, made a presentation regarding the Colchester East Hans Public Library. Discussion was held and questions were addressed. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends that council write a letter to the appropriate minister copying M L As, asking for the province to provide appropriate funding for resources to libraries so they can continue to provide services to our growing population. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by Counselor Dixon. Are there any, Counselor Mitchell?
Yes, the motion says copy the M L As. Could we also copy the N S F M and that correspondence?
Is that agreed?
Thank you.
Do we need?
Members of the N S F M, not the N S F M.
Yeah, just for clarification, the organization or the members of N S F M?
Well, I think. I think if it goes N S F M, then it'll probably, it'll be, won't come back to committee? Okay, then send the membership, then.
So do you want to, perhaps just to clean it up, move an amendment to copy the membership of N S F M?
That's what I said.
We have a seconder to the amendment, seconded by Counselor Perry. Discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote on the amendment. Motion is passed unanimously. Now to the amended motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote.
Okay, I lost my rhythm.
Motion is passed unanimously. Okay, back to you, Counselor Garden Cole.
Item two, Opportunity for Subsidized Community Energy and Emissions Plan. There is an opportunity to participate in the N C A program to receive a C E P at a heavily subsidized rate. Staff recommend taking advantage of this opportunity and using the information gathered and potential recommendations received in the C E P to help inform the municipal climate change action plan update and future work plans. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends that council work with Quest Canada to develop a community energy and emission plan through their Net Zero Communities Accelerator Program at a cost of up to 6,000 plus H S T to be funded by the Sustainability Program Reserve. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by Counselor Perry. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Third item, Medical Center Lift Station Funding Sources. The municipality of East Hans applied to municipal affairs and housing in late 2024 for funding from the Growth and Renewal for Infrastructure Development Program. East Hans was successful in obtaining 150,000 for the Shibby Water Treatment Plant Backwash Storage Project, but it was not successful in the $475,000 application for the Medical Center Lift Station project. The 2025-26 capital budget assumed this funding would be received. A decision must now be made as to how to replace this funding. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends that council allocate 475,000 of housing accelerator funding towards the Medical Center Lift Station project. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by Counselor Mitchell. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Motion is passed unanimously.
Fourth item. Fire Service Funding Policy Update. The Rural Fire Department Capital Fund is a reserve that provides capital funding to rural fire departments in Rodden, Keneke, Knoll, Walton, Gore, and Maitland. Council provided direction to staff to bring forward policy amendments that establishes an equal allocation model of the reserve for departments to access. The fire service funding policy is the appropriate policy to included amendments. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends to council to approve the amendments to the fire service funding policy as attached and as amended to the executive committee agenda dated May thirteenth, 2025, and as amended. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by Counselor Dixon. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Someone has not voted, and the motion is passed unanimously.
This concludes the report.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, we will go to the Planning Advisory Committee Report. Over to you, Counselor Mitchell.
The committee held its regular meeting on May thirteenth, 2025, in council chambers. The following motions are coming forward as a result of that meeting. Single egress-ingress presentation. Peter Rogers, K C, made a presentation to the committee on behalf of landowners in the Grand Lake area regarding subdivision regulations that currently prohibit development of a single access beyond 100 lots. Number two, supplementary report, single ingress-egress development. In February 2025, staff presented vulnerability assessment of each of the areas in East Hans with over 100 lots and with only one ingress. As a result of this, staff presentation council requested staff research when and why section 10.16 of the subdivision bylaw was created and request that staff consult with East Hans Fire Services. The Planning Advisory Committee did not make a recommendation as a result of the report. Number three, P L N twenty-four dash zero-one-two, the Shaw Group Amendments to the Official Community Plan. This was dealt with at the public hearing. Number four, Plan twenty-five zero-zero-two, Magnolia Continuing Care Holdings Development Agreement Amendments. Municipality has received an application to B D Stevens on behalf of Magnolia Continuing Care Holdings Limited. The application is for amendments to the existing development agreement to enable increase in units from 70 to 76 units. To accommodate this increase in units, other amendments include an increase in floor area of the building and changes to the parking lot. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council give initial consideration to amend the existing development agreement for an assisted living facility at 410 Highway Number Two, Enfield, to enable a public hearing and authorize staff to schedule a public hearing. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by Counselor Hap. I have Counselor Musa and Counselor Rhino on. I'm gonna ask you to take yourselves off if it's not to this motion, and put yourself back on at the end of the report. Well, I'll go to you at the end of the report, if that's okay. Yeah. Okay, any comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Number five, P L N twenty-four dash zero-one-three, Central Tire Development Agreement. That was dealt with at the public hearing. Number six, Oak Door Event Regulations. That was dealt with at the public hearing this evening. Number seven, Village Core Density Increase. East Hans entered an agreement with C M H C for H A F funding. As part of the agreement, East Hans has to complete nine initiatives. The ninth initiative is to increase the density in the village, all Village Core designations and zonings by permitting 16 dwelling units as of right through site plan approval. The initiative needs to be completed to fulfill the terms of the funding agreement. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council give first reading to proposal to amend the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to increase the density in the Village Core designation zone for the purpose of enabling a public hearing and authorize staff to schedule a public hearing. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded by Counselor Miriam. Counselor Garden Cole?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just have a couple of questions to staff on this. So currently, the 835 square meter permitted, the buildings permitted at that size in the Village Core. Those buildings would have staircases, stairwells and staircases going to the different levels. So I'm just trying to figure out where this, where this huge number was reflected in. So it's not reflected in the staircases or the stairwells. They are already there. The, the commercial zone, that's the commercial, mandatory commercial that you're putting in, looking to put into the new zoning. So that's 75% of the front of a building. Is that correct?
Whoops.
To Madam Warden, yes, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm pretty sure it was.
75% of the front of the building, and it doesn't specify how deep that 75% has to go?
Correct. So it could be halfway, or, you know, whatever is practical. It would have to be habitable space, but correct.
So then, in fact, there could be several apartment units behind it with 75% commercial in front?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm just concerned about this, this increase. You know, as I said last week, 25% more units equates to, it may not equate to 25% more square footage, because that would put you at 1,100 and some. But for us to be jumping to 1,888 odd meters is, an increase of this magnitude is unnecessary. We all agree that we need to meet that ninth initiative in order to, to get those monies. There's no question about that. But we don't have to increase this much in order to do it. When I look at those two-bedroom apartments that Shaw showed up there on the, on the plan tonight, you know, we wouldn't even be looking at anything that small, and we would still be, be meeting the needs and beyond without having to go that, that, that amount. When Village Core zoning was decided on, back in whatever year it was, 2015 or 16, it was with a lot of thought and intent and consideration of the communities and what would be reasonable while allowing growth, but still keeping that community feel. And I feel like this is disregarding all the time and the, and the effort that went into that by increasing these so much. I looked around after last week at the buildings that we have, and I choose District One because we are probably further along than a lot, than other districts in what we have developed. So we've got M U C zoning, which allows way more. But in our Village Core zone, we But in our Village Core zone, we've got some substantial buildings now, and they are falling under the criteria of 835 meters. To increase it by 120%, which it is, the size of the building would be that much bigger to 1,888 meters is unnecessary, and it's also, it would take away from the community feel, which is what we put in place in the first place. I just can't stress this enough. Yeah, I just don't think that increasing it this much is necessary. It's not thinking about the residents. It's not thinking about the community feel. And I just feel that we can achieve what we want to achieve with less footage and maintain some of Village Core feel, which is what we should be looking at.
Any further comments? I'm going to ask the Deputy Warden to take the chair. Just to briefly comment, I've heard what Counselor Garden Cole has said, and I sat around here for many years as we developed the criteria for Village Core. And we were particular, you know, about the types of windows and the types of cladding and in making buildings look more like pre-existing buildings at times. And we really were concerned with keeping the character of our villages while doing development. And I do agree with Counselor Garden Cole. I don't think we need to more than double the size of the allowable building in Village Core to accomplish our goals. I think we can certainly allow the extra four units, I believe it is, without increasing the size of those buildings by 120%. So I guess at this point in time, I rarely speak out in council. I did speak in committee, but I did feel strongly enough this time to say, I'm not going to be supporting the motion with the square meterage or footage that's in it, and that's why. Because I do agree that it goes against every parameter we used when we developed the Village Core zone. Thank you.
Back to you, Warden.
Counselor Tingley.
To the Warden and through the Warden, I certainly understand and respect what Counselor Garden Cole is saying and what you're saying as well. And, you know, the talk about what you were trying to do in the past and that sort of thing, but this is not the past, and things have changed a lot in the last five or six or 10 years, certainly in the last five years. And I think it is warranted to make this change, and I'm not afraid of the size of the building. It's, you know, as far as going back to the way things were here 50 years ago, 25 years ago, 10 years ago, five years, that's gone. We do want to do whatever we can do to have an aesthetically nice-looking community and have good infrastructure and that sort of thing. But I think it's necessary to make these kind of decisions to even have development. So I think the staff did a good report on this, and for those reasons, I'm going to support the motion.
Deputy Warden McPhee.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to staff. I just want to be sure that on Monday I didn't misspeak by telling people that if this goes through, the building wouldn't have to be 16 units. They could still stay at 12 or 14.
Through you, Madam Warden. Yeah, these provisions only kick in if you want to do the 16, but, you know, you could still do the 12 unit if you wanted to.
Right. That's great. Thanks.
Counselor Garden Cole.
So just to clarify, if this doesn't go through, that doesn't mean that we are not going to meet our ninth initiative, correct?
We will not.
If this doesn't go through, that means there is opportunity to make another motion, to have a different offer and meet our ninth initiative, correct?
Through you, Madam Warden, you could still meet your ninth initiative if you went back to the drawing board and created another set of regulations.
Okay, so two weeks before this, what was the amount? This is a second amount that has come to us, is that correct? There was another amount?
Through you, Madam Warden. Well, staff initially did look at a proposed increase to 1,584 square meters, but then we held the public information meeting, and based on the feedback that we got at that meeting, you know, we thought there was a compelling case made by people who developed these buildings, who, you know, indicated the need for more two-bedroom units, and, you know, that's where the 1,888 came from.
So the first amount was?
1,584.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I just want to make it clear that this not passing does not mean that we're not going to meet our ninth initiative. It just means that we need to reconsider what would be a suitable amount. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak? Counselor Perry.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Where this motion is just let it go to a public hearing to hear more information from the public on what they want, because I'm hearing from different responses from counselors in an area that would be affected. So there's a couple that are saying one way, a couple that are saying the other way. So I would really like to hear from the public, and that's why I will support the motion for this to go to a public hearing, to make sure that all residents have their voices heard. Thank you.
And the caution being, there will not be an opportunity to amend anything once it gets to the public hearing stage. Counselor Musa.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just want to remember, remind everybody that this affect Mount Uniatu, and with the 1,500 square meter over there in rural area, you're not going to be able to achieve what you need. We need more development over there. We need bigger apartment for families, and we need some commercial too. So integrating all that in one building, it's going to be awesome for our community too. So we should look both ways. We look for the whole municipality, not a certain area. So take this in consideration. Thank you.
No one left to speak. We'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed by a vote of eight to three, with Counselor Rhino, Counselor Garden Cole, and myself voting nay. Okay, back to you, Counselor Mitchell.
Number eight, non-farm dwellings. It was dealt with at the public hearing. Number nine, MGA changes. It was dealt with at the public hearing this evening. This concludes the report.
Okay, we did have Counselor Rhino and then Counselor Musa, who had requested to speak on an item in this report earlier. I'll go Counselor Rhino, okay? It was on first the last time I wrote it down, and then I'll go to Counselor Musa. I didn't write it, but I remembered it.
Thank you, Warden. I just want to get back to this here just a second. It's with the report with regard to single egress and development. As it stands right now, this will, in places in the municipality, there will be no more development allowed. To me, it's not the purpose of my intent of the original motion years back. I understand that motions were made, and I think it was a tie vote, and I understand the policy, a tie vote is a lost vote. But that is not a clear way on how to deal with that with half and half going through this. I would like to see, you know, I'd be interested in bringing this back because I think the motion was on number four of the options, that I would be open to some of the other options as well, you know, to, as not to hinder development in those specialist areas. But I don't think that we did get an opportunity. I think it was, okay, this isn't going to go any further today, and the way we went. So that's why I asked the question on the status quo. So that's how I feel right now. I'd like to see this.
Would you like to make a motion to have the report brought back at next executive for further discussion?
I could, but I see another light on. I'd like to see, you know, hear the input from there, too. Oh, yeah, take your light off now. Okay. No, I would move that this supplemental report be brought back at the executive for more discussion around this, because I didn't, why I do that, because I didn't feel that there was a very clear majority one way or the other on how to deal with this, because I do not want to limit, you know, development in areas that, in my opinion, shouldn't be limited right now. So I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. First up, Counselor Tingley.
Through the chair, I respect Counselor Rhino's point that there's no clear cut. One side voted more than the other, but a six-six, or a tie is a decision, and that's a decision. And if it went the other way and you liked it, you decept it. So I don't, I don't, well, I think it was a point, I think it was a point of order arguing the vote.
The point is that, Counselor, whatever his reasons, there's a motion on the floor to bring this back for further discussion, and I think that's what we're discussing.
I accept that. I just wanted to make that point.
Counselor Musa.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just want to say, maybe it's my fault, maybe it's all, most of my colleague's fault. We didn't put our light on, and it was shut down. I think, like, I was surprised that we didn't look for another option.
I'm going to intervene here. We had a workshop on how to conduct meetings, which as Chair, I took very clear direction from, that you gave it a few seconds. If nobody's light was on, you moved on in order to keep the meeting flowing, and I do believe that's what Counselor Mitchell did.
That's what I said. It's my fault.
He did check. No one asked to speak, so we do have an opportunity here now to bring it back if we want, and that's the motion that's on the floor.
Thank you. I just said, it's my fault, so thank you.
Counselor Hibb.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I think one of the reasons why maybe it was a tie vote, we were given four or five options to go by, and a motion was made right off the bat to accept one. We never got a chance to discuss any other ones because we had to discuss the motion.
But that motion was defeated, and another motion was made.
Well, I'm just saying how it was, and I think we never had a chance to discuss the other ones prior to that motion being made. And I think if we had a chance to have a lengthy discussion on each one of these, I think we'd have a better understanding.
The motion on the floor tonight is to bring it back for further discussion. So to the motion as to whether folks are for or against bringing it back. Seeing no one else, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed by a vote of 10 to 1, with Counselor Tingley voting nay. Okay, that concluded Planning Advisory Committee. We will go to Police Advisory. Counselor Rhino.
Thank you, Madam Warden. The committee held its regular meeting on May 13, 2025, in council chambers. No motions were coming forward as a result of the meeting. I'll summarize it, but we had an oath of office, Form 4, for council members. Counselor Tingley, Counselor Musa, Counselor Perry repeated the oath of office in unison, signed the oath document, and returned to the Assistant Municipal Clerk for their record. And we also had an RCMP quarterly report presented, which included follow-ups to previous meetings, HR update, and APP update, and confidential public safety update. This concludes my report.
Thank you. We will now go to the Warden's report, so I will turn the chair over to Deputy Warden. As I begin my Warden's report this evening, counselors, I just want to mention an issue, and I don't want counselors to think that I'm against business from counselors or anything like that, but I just do want to draw it because some of us have been here a lot longer than others, and business from counselors takes more and more time every meeting, and that's not a bad thing, if that's, you know, if we have issues we want to bring forward, and I'm fine with that. But initially, business from counselors was to allow counselors to bring any issues forward from their areas, which were not on the agenda, and anything that had to be brought forward and discussed. And many, many times, you'd go around the room, and the majority of counselors would say nothing at this time. Now, over time, and I think it probably started around COVID and when we started not being able to get out in a boat as much, and it became a more of a reporting thing as to what we did, and that's not a bad thing, you know, if that's what council wants to do. So I'm not asking, I'm not saying it's bad. I'm not saying if it's good. I'm just asking counselors maybe to think it over, because I've heard a lot of complaints about the lengths that our meetings are getting to be, and just to think it over if you want to change the way we do business from counselors, or if everyone's happy with the way we do it now, that's great, too. But I just did want to mention it, you know, as, I know, I've heard here we can't go back to the past, but I've also heard a lot of complaints about the length of meetings, and that is one thing that sometimes adds half of 30 minutes to an hour to the evening, depending on, you know, what takes place. So I'm going to very quickly go through my Warden's report and touch briefly. I'm not going to try and hit everything that I did or everywhere that I went this past month. I do try to be out in a boat in the community when I'm able. I was able to attend the library opening of their 75th anniversary celebrations in Mount Uniat on April 26, the brunch in East Gore on the 27th. I was at NSFM in Truro on the 1st and 2nd of May, and at Municipal Volunteer Recognition Night on the evening of May 2, which was well attended by numerous volunteers and well, a beautiful meal well served by the Knoll and District Fire Department. I attended the PIM in Kennet Cook on the 5th. I was pleased to present an 80th birthday certificate to Rosalyn Grant on May 9, and took part in a Mayor's, Wardens, and CO Zoom call on a funding update with NSFM on the 14th, and went to a breakfast in Stanley on the 18th hosted by the Stanley Sport Aviation Society. That concludes my report.
Deputy Warden, back to you.
Okay, we'll start, I don't remember where we started last time. I'll go to Counselor Rhino.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So, I mean, if I can leave as soon as I get mine done, I guess, maybe. Anyway, just a short, a short report. On May 2, I attended Volunteer Night, which was well attended, and I want to compliment staff for the amount of work that was put into it. It was well received, and I got a lot of good reports off that. On May 4, I presented an 85th certificate to Mr. Garfield Beckman for his 85th birthday. On May 5, an info meeting for the Public Information Meeting held in Kennet Cook. May 7, I gave an 80th birthday certificate to Mr. Carl Brown of Tannicay. I also attended, and I don't have the date here, the PIM in Mount Uniat. And on May 18, Saturday past, I presented an 85th birthday certificate to a former municipal employee, Helen Lawrence, and that was well attended. There's just one other, or maybe one other issue I'd like to break out, and I mentioned this in Police Advisory Committee at the end of it. I wish we would consider moving the quarterly meetings to an evening meeting. I find that with the agendas being so grandful, and with the policing issues that are here now and will come with the increase in population, that I can't see the Police Advisory Reports being any shorter. I understand that public members have to leave jobs and rush here to try to get here. I think we feel the pressures of having to try to get this done by a certain time to, in order to try to complete the other business of the day. My thing, if we, you know, my thing, if we went, moved to an evening meeting, let's say from 7 o'clock to 9 o'clock, that gives us two full hours with no pressures put on us from any other committees, and would allow a free and equal discussion without those pressures being put upon us. So I would wish that we would consider, I'd like to hear before a motion is made, I'd like to hear what other counselors So I, I would wish that we would consider, I'd like to hear before a motion is made, I'd like to hear what other Counselors feel about this, but I think the Police Advisory Committee work is not going to get any smaller, and with eleven, when we went to the Committee of the Whole for Police Advisory, that meant there's a lot more questions in the districts that are coming forth there, so. We would not feel the pressure, and I, I would think it would, in my opinion, probably be easier on the public members, so. I, I put that out there for consideration of, of council, and we'll see what everybody feels about that. Or maybe, maybe we could even do a survey at some point. I, I don't know, but I think we have, what, three months before now, before we have to make some kind of formal decisions, so.
Maybe it could be put on an agenda for discussion prior to the next, because there would have to be consultation with public members and the RCMP and that as well, so.
Anyway, that, well, and also, I must bring up forth the, the business of, as I say, not just public police advisory, the business of this council executive is getting extremely. We, the other night, what was quarter to, quarter to eight before we get in here, or, or somewhere around that, I, it was always scheduled for the next Thursday for a follow-up and runover of, of that time. I really don't think personally that any good decisions are made when you sit here for eight, ten hours a day. I really think that decision-making is, is somewhat tiring at that time. So I would also wish that we, everybody would consider using that runover meeting on Thursday nights. Yes, it's another trip here, but I'd rather make another trip here on fresh, fresh thoughts than I would on stale tired thoughts. Thank you.
Deputy Counselor? Counselor Gorden Cole.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I attended numerous committee meetings this month, Open East Hans, and Volunteer Banquet to honor our firefighters and long, long-service firefighters and our volunteers. And I don't have any new business coming from District One at this time. Thank you.
Counselor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I'll be quick. I attended the Volunteer Award Night, a very enjoyable night. I worked at McDonald's for McHappy Days, and I served the customers through the drive-through, which was rewarding. I attended Community Safety Day at the Sportsplex on May the tenth, and it rained, but it was still a good day. I gave two beautification grants to keep Elmstale beautiful. I attended the PIM on the sixth, and I was here last evening for the budget and the How We'll Thrive in Twenty Twenty-Five presented by the Warden and the CEO. And I want to give a thank you to staff, Jesse's Department for the follow-up of the ditching on Highway two fourteen near Horn Road. We're hoping to see how that plays out in the next rain event. And that's all, Madam Warden.
Counselor Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Like most Counselors, I've attended a lot of, seems like a lot of meetings in the last month, and things have gone, gone well. Enjoyed the Volunteer Awards Night and thought that went over well, except for someone stole my chocolates. That was a guest. Chocolates. And the only comment, I opened, Open East Hans Day with everything going on, there's so much going on in the community. We were at the Fire Hall in Enfield, the people coming to barbecue was, they couldn't get everything. They were tied up at the Sportsplex, tied up with the activities that maybe in future years we can try to look at, not putting everything on the same day if possible. And the only complaint I got going on in East Hans or in Enfield is the roads. I corresponded with the Director, and I think we have a solution coming, but I don't know how well it's going to work with. Hopefully, things will get better. Thank you.
Counselor Heb.
Thank you, Warden. I attended the Volunteer Night Awards, very well-presented. Went to three PIM meetings, Kennet Cook, Madison Center, and Mount Uniac. And as your representative to the Northern Waste Committee, most of the discussion was on PPR. That's going to be coming into effect in December, and all the preparations is being looked at to make sure that runs properly. Another discussion was held on sharps, and we're getting a lot of sharps in our regular garbage. It's causing a very, very lot of concern. And one of the problems is that, that's like the drugstore who have the sharp containers. They're getting, having a hard job getting containers, and when they do get them, they're hard to get people to pick them up and dispose of them. And that program is a voluntary program, and there's no regulations really regarding that. And divert Nova Scotia is in consultation with the government now to try and come up with a program to handle sharps, and they're looking to have the same program as a PPR to, to handle those situations. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Ward McSee.
Ah, thank you, Warden. I'll try to keep this brief. The Haydays Committee, we had a contest for a new logo, and one was chosen. It was a big, a very hard decision. Went to the NSFM conference, and I'd like just to mention two presentations that were made there. One was on erosion, was very interesting. Unfortunately, it was cut short, because a couple of the presenters before that were speakers, kind of went on long, so that was unfortunate. And the other presentation that was very interesting and could apply to us was a group that's a cooperative for low-rent housing, and some of the buildings that they've developed, they buy them either very cheaply if they can, or they're sometimes donated by municipalities, whatever, and it's been quite a success. I don't know if that's something would ever fit our municipality, but it's something we should keep in mind. And had a problem come up in District Four, which I'm working with the RCMP and our Manager of Protective Services on people passing school buses in District Four, and I know that's something the RCMP has mentioned in their reports. It's becoming a greater problem. I don't have a suggestion as to how we can solve it, but I'd like to keep working on that. And yes, I did meet with the MLA, John A. McDonald, discuss some issues that people had in District Four, and I see there's some movement on those, so very happy to report that. And also, I'd like to congratulate all the volunteers, firemen, or fire persons who were presented awards at the volunteer meeting. It was very well-attended and very enjoyable. Thank you.
Deputy Ward. Counselor Mario.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and it's a pleasure to give my monthly update as well for District Six. The recurring theme here is all of the Counselors did attend the, the Annual Volunteer Awards in Knoll, and it was excellent. And thanks for, for Counselor Rhino for hosting and doing a great job with that. Other things, May sixth, I attended a Public Information Meeting in Elmstale on the weekend of May third and fourth. Some activities, I attended some activities at Milford Rec Hall, one being the, an art show put on by East Hans Fine Arts Association. And also that same weekend, I attended and saw firsthand the great fun that young, a lot of young families were having with a trout fishing derby at the, a pond adjacent to the, the Milford Fire Hall, and very well-attended, lots of fun, and it brings back great memories of, you know, young kids catching fish, having, having a good time. I also would like to once again extend congratulations to our new Lance Fire Chief, Kenza Harris. And I suspect Counselor Tingley might have a few words to say about that too, but Kenza Harris is the first female fire chief in Lance, and it's, you know, a great honor, and, and we're exciting, excited to working with her going forward, and as well dealing with other various constituency issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. I think everybody's touched on Volunteer Night. It was a great success. Only a few things I have here. I got a question for John, Director of Planning. This, this past few weeks, been approached by even more residents who have been turned away from having an accessory unit put on their property. I'm just wondering, what's the timeline for that report to come back to committee? Just for an update, just for an update.
Yeah, through you, Madam Warden. We're expecting it to come next month, in June.
Perfect, excellent. That's, that's what I wanted to hear. And then just three, two really good news stories and one information. First, I'd just like to congratulate all of the actors, actresses, and volunteers that made Into the Woods, presented by Uniac District School. The play and musical was a huge success. All the shows were very well-attended, and there's definitely some very good young talent out there. Also, there's a large number of local volleyball players in Mount Uniac, and actually throughout the whole municipality, that play on a variety of different teams throughout Nova Scotia, and represented Nova Scotia at Nationals with their respective club teams. I believe this year it was held in New Brunswick. The Eastern Nationals were held there, and there was some, some great play and some, and some great performances by a lot of, of local volleyball players from Mount Uniac. Some, I know some here in the corridor, and, and even up in the Northern Shore region, there was some excellent play by them all. And I got a lot of reports back that, you know, there's lots of talent in that sport here too. And lastly, but not leastly, because we will meet for council after this, the Fireman's Fair has come up in Mount Uniac. The theme this year is What Old Is New Again. And the twentieth of June, from six to ten PM, the Midway will be open with fireworks. On the twenty-first of June, there'll be a parade. The Midway will reopen at twelve to four, and then that night, there will be a concert by John Seer Band, and it will go from nine to one in the hall, and cost is fifteen dollars a ticket. And that's all I have from District Eight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd just ask, if you think of it, could you shoot an email off with those dates for the Fireman's Fair, because, thank you. Counselor Musa.
It, it will come. Thank you, Madam Warden. Well, I want to start with the recreation side of Mount Uniac. I think a lot of residents are disappointed. We have, we have the splash pad in our strategical plan, and we said every region have to have one. And that's a forced summer with Mount Uniac not having one and every other area have one, so. I want, wondering, I know, I know, like, I feel that we're put on a back burner, like the Sportsplex thing came in and took everything from staff, and I don't know what's happening there, so I'm very disappointed, and my residents are very disappointed about that, so. Any, any feedback from staff would be appreciated.
Thank you, through you, Madam Warden. So, so Counselor Musa, I can, I can appreciate, you know, many residents' concerns. We are going through the Recreation Facilities Master Plan. Certainly, we did the Mount Uniac focus piece as well, but at that point, I don't believe one of the recommendations was a specific splash pad in Mount Uniac. We had, you know, committed to exploring some other things, but that is something that we will be looking at for the entire municipal plan that we're doing right now.
But it was on a strategic plan, that's what I understood, that when, when we said it's on our strategic plan, that means every area have one. Isn't, was that, it came in? That's what I was told. I don't know. That's changed.
No, not for each area. Yep.
Through you, Madam Warden. I don't recall it being on a strategic plan for a splash pad in Mount Uniac. No. We did that for, for the, when the skate parks were built, there was a certain amount of money set aside for, for skate parks in each area, and in lieu of that, I believe the Finley Park Group got a splash pad in lieu of a.
They, they got a sports pad.
Yeah, in lieu of the, I, I think it's probably been mentioned in some of the long-term plans, but we currently don't have a budget for a splash pad or a motion from council for a splash pad. If that's something we want to explore, then that would have to come from Mount Uniac Counselors.
I, I think I've asked for it more than one time, but every time we, we put back to that strategy, Mount Uniac strategy, and it's taken like three years so far, so I don't know.
I, I think Atlanta has something from the Mount Uniac strategy.
Through the Warden, so I think you're referencing actually the playground strategy, where it does reference looking into that with future recreation studies. So that's, I think, the reference that you're referring to. Certainly, we know from the Mount Uniac strategy that perhaps it didn't delve into the exact answers and, and things that the residents were needed, so we, we have been seriously looking at that for all areas, not just splash pads, but what is required and what that, what that needs. Because there's a lot of study that goes into what would be required for that. Our current splash pads run off of municipal water, et cetera, et cetera. I know the Finley Park scenario is slightly different, but we'd have to look at what that requires from an infrastructure perspective to actually support those. So I do, I do see what you are referencing, and it is the playground strategy that talks about looking at that in future studies.
Counselor Perry.
Thank you. When I first arrived on council in twenty eighteen, this was brought up, and it was said at that time that Mount Uniac was the next area that this was going to be explored to happen in. It was brought up, we used to have meetings every council, where we'd sit down with each area and go over the area's priorities. We haven't done that in a number of years, and sat down with, with, with the Counselors and gone over that in groups. It used to be one for the corridor, one for the rural, and one for the Mount Uniac area. We haven't had those meetings in that way before. So I guess it's up to us to schedule those. And this is something that Counselor Musa has brought up for years and years, and a lot of it was before our current Director was here, right? And we were always told and pulled aside, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, and nothing has come. And it's just getting to the point now where if you look at what's happening, and Counselor Musa is right, we've had a lot of extra requirements pushed on our staff in a short period of time, and we don't have a lot of staff. I'm sorry. So every time there's a crisis at the pool, every time there's a crisis at the Sportsplex, and, and the Parks and Rec staff is stretched thin along with other staff to amend those, other stuff has to wait, because we just don't have the people. So this is, this is also, could be a person problem as well, because I'm not saying that, you know, staff, you guys are, are doing a lot with, with, with not a lot of horsepower, in my mind. But this is something that's been on the mark now for at least seven years. And it's, we've, we've constantly been told, you know, it's coming, it's coming. We paid out of our Mount Uniac recreation funds, ten thousand dollars for a study that was not worth the paper it was written on. And I gave the Director all the credit in the world for taking that study and trying to make the best out of it, what, what, what came from that contractor, because it was absolutely garbage. They never even talked to half the residents, and it didn't reflect anything. And it's, it's just coming to, it's coming to a head now. The community's growing, we are a fast-growing area. We talk about amenities bring people. Well, Mount Uniac has no amenities, and the people came, so now they want some, they want something. They want to see something for their taxes on their one-point-seven-million-dollar home, on their eight-hundred-thousand-dollar home. And the, the sediment is rising again. It was stemmed for a lot of period of times, but it is really starting to boil over when things happen in other regions, and it's not happening there. And it's, there is other processes, yes, but Counselor Musa is right. We were told many times that one is coming, and we talked about the Finley Park, and they talked about the water sources, and there's plenty of lakes. And then we talked about, it all happened again. It was talked about again when we were doing the property assessments of the properties we owned, and which property would be looked at as the best suitable point. And again, it just kind of has gone into the ether. And, you know, this is his third term on council, my two-and-a-half term on council, and this started the day one that I was here, and nothing's really moved forward in that, in that regard. So I can understand the frustration he hears every day a lot more, because he's in face of the public with his business. And, and it's really starting to, to. And, and it's really starting to, to, to go bad. And we're talking about, you know, making, you know, everybody feel welcome in East Hans and it was moving in the right direction for a long time, but it's going the wrong way now. I'll tell you that right now. People are getting frustrated. Thank you.
Councillor Musa, did you have anything else from business from councillors?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I, I made a motion about the smaller setback on lake, lake property with the small, undersized lake properties. And the guy approached me again and I, I was wondering if we, if we do it with a plan review, how long it's going to take? Because the guy, he's afraid he's gonna lose his septic permit and probably not getting it back, so.
Through you, Madam Warden. A major plan review realistically takes two years, so it'll be 26, 27.
So, so, so my question is if, if this lot is small and we are, I was always told that our restrictions are less restrictive than the province. So if the province approve him a septic on his lot, why wouldn't be approving him like a small, a small two-unit building? So is there any way we can move it faster, so?
Through you, Madam Warden. Of course, if we're directed to, we will. As you see our agendas in the last few months though, we're very busy.
I totally understand, yeah.
And of course, my preference is always to deal with these one-off issues in a package as part of a plan review so that we're not so busy every month, but if we're directed to, we'll, we'll fit it in as, as we can.
We have, John, I'm sorry, but we have been dealing with one-off issue every month now, so that, that's something that somebody bought a lot, a legal lot, and he's not allowed to build on it, even though if he got the province approval for a septic, which is more dangerous for a lake than a small property. So I think if we, if, what's good for somebody is good for...
Councillor, if you wish to have it looked at sooner, you'd have to make a motion.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion. With, with, I, I move that with the staff, if they have time to move the motion that I made about setbacks on a, undersized lot on a lake, I move it out of the planning review and deal with it as a separate issue.
Do we have a seconder?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? And I, just to stress that staff have indicated it's not going to be easy and something else will probably fall back, but...
I said with, with their, within their time if they could fit it in.
Okay. No questions? Motion is passed unanimously. Anything else, Councillor Musa?
I, I wanna, I wanna answer you about the, the problem we had about that at the back. Like, I understand everything you said is right, but...
Those discussions were in camera, councillor?
No.
Well, that was a PIM. Oh, okay. Sorry. Mixed up. My apologies.
No, no, but, but honestly, myself, probably I made a mistake and probably a few of my fellow councillor, but I didn't expect, probably I didn't expect the, the motion to be defeated. Like, I, I was thinking like how, how that motion can be defeated if we're gonna help so many people move on with their land? And probably we didn't put our, that's why probably we didn't put our, and, and for me, I was, I was hoping that another option would come up, so that's it. I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Councillor Tingley. I did click it, it will come there.
Through the chair. Thank you for the, the comments regarding the business from councillors and the advice about keeping it short. And I wasn't going to say anything at all tonight because a lot of stuff has already been said about where we all go and that type of thing. But I will mention our new fire chief in Lance, Kenza. She was chosen by her peers and, and that's a very strong fire department out there and they've had some other good leaders in that department. And her being chosen by her peers says a lot about the confidence they have in her. I've only met her a few times, but she does present as pretty smart, great personality and a strong leader. So like councillor Maryam, I just want to congratulate her for, for her new role with the Fargie. That's it.
Through Madam Warden, to Councillor Musa's discussion earlier about the splash pad in Mount Uniac. So the conversation at council, I do recall it being done once before, but there was no motion of council. So if the Mount Uniac councillors want a splash pad built in Mount Uniac outside of the recommendations that are to come forward from the facilities master plan, then a motion of council needs to be made for us to make that a priority for that community. And we would need to do all the investigation that Atlanta has spoken about, about water supplies and land availability and whatnot and prepare a report and bring it back on all of the, you know, the funding mechanisms and, and all of the functions of developing a splash pad, how it would be operated, all of that information. So we do need a motion of council for us to act on anything and to this point, we don't have one from council on that topic. So I don't want to leave here thinking, well, we had the conversation, we said we wanted a splash pad and one will come, because that, we do need direction of council for that to happen. We have had meetings to Councillor Perry's point. We had one set of meetings years ago that he's referring to around how we wanted, how different communities wanted to spend their gas tax and what the priorities were around that. So those were very specific meetings that we don't necessarily do every term of council. We do have it on our strategic plan this time around to have that 10-year vision again. So we do intend to do that by area and by community. So we would engage sort of in a similar way as to how we've done in the past. But if the intention is to have that brought back specifically for a splash pad in Mount Uniac, we need direction from council to do that. That's not something I can just start because it doesn't show up in any of our budget documents currently. So I don't have direction to start that work.
Councillor Perry.
And I have no problem making that motion and probably would have, would have made the motion a long time ago, but we were given other advice at the time and that's why that motion's never been on the floor, right? So it's, it's, it's one of those things when you're told you don't need a motion for it, it's being worked on, it'll be taken care of in this, in your study, it'll be taken care of in this, you don't need to make a motion for that. It'll all come together when the plan comes together, is what we were told.
It's 10:14, councillor.
So I know. So I'm gonna make a motion right now that staff explore the establishment of a splash pad in the Mount Uniac area.
We have a seconder. Seconded by Councillor Musa. Any comments or questions? We'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously. That concludes business from councillors. Seeing no other business coming forward, I would declare this meeting adjourned.
Time for the...
Oh, sorry. Setting the time and date of the next council meetings, June 17th, 2025, regular meeting of council, policy in in camera, and June 25th, 2025, the regular meeting of council. I don't believe we need to vote on those, so I now declare the meeting adjourned.